Good, is everyone logged in? All right. I would like to call this meeting back to order. At this time, I would like to acknowledge that we are meeting on traditional land of T D six territory. And acknowledge the diverse indigenous peoples whose ancestors footsteps have marked this territory for centuries. Such as Cree, Dene, Sotu, Blackfoot, Nkorasu, as was Mateen Inuit. Now settlers from around the world. And do a roll call of council members, Consular Wright.
Good morning.
Consular Mack.
Good morning.
Consular Prince Bay.
Good morning.
How are you feeling today?
Not so good, but thanks for asking.
Hang in there. Consular Stevenson.
Good morning, sending well wishes.
Yeah, Consular Paquette.
Good morning.
Oh, you just sound horrible as well, it's too bad.
Well, thank you.
Wish you well as well, yeah. Consular Tang.
Good morning.
Consular Hamilton.
Good morning.
How is August doing well?
He's doing a lot better and I'm actually on my way in, so I'll be joining you shortly.
All right, Consular Rutherford.
Good morning.
Consular Salvador.
Good morning.
Consular Cartmel.
Good morning.
Consular Rice.
Good morning.
And Consular Janz.
Good morning.
All right, we are on our first item, time specific. Item seven point four, twenty twenty one Edmonton Police Service Annual Report. And we have a commission chair and other folks with us today, so maybe we start with introduction if so we know who who are all the people joining us and over to you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, council, for allowing us to come to speak today. I'm John McDougall, the Chair of the Commission, to my right is Matt Barker, our Executive Director. And to the left is our representatives from the city Edmonton Police Service, and I'll ask them to introduce themselves, please.
Thank you, my name is Laurie Lorenz, I'm the Executive Director of our Value and Impact Division in EPS.
Thank you and good morning, my name is Sean Tout, I'm the Executive Director of our Information Management and Intelligence Division at the Edmonton Police Service.
So the Commission was pleased to review and approve the Edmonton Police Service's twenty twenty one annual report at our April public meeting. The report you're going to receive today demonstrates that the service has an ongoing commitment to community safety and inclusivity. This annual report shows the responsiveness of the EPS to building a safer community for all Edmontonians. I'm pleased to see that this report demonstrates how the service plans to meet a high level of transparency. Share relevant safety information with the public while measuring its performance in a number of important areas. It's great to see that EPS is tracking diversity in its workforce, including the number of women. Indigenous and racialized members within the senior ranks of the service. This is promising to myself and to the Commission, and we look forward to seeing an increase in these areas as time progresses. EPS is also driving systemic change with how it deals with the community, with the implementation of three new advisory councils. The first, the Nisomacquin Council, has been formed to help the police address inequities and barriers faced by indigenous peoples. This also helped the police to implement recommendations from the Truth and Reconciliation Commission of Canada. And the National Inquiry into Missing and Murdered Indigenous Women and Girls. The second council, SOGI, or the Sexual Orientation, Gender, Identity and Expression Council. Helps members of the queer community and it puts EPS to a S L G B two Q S plus community report back into practice. The third is the Chief's Community Council. This helps the police shape policies and procedures which relate to all communities in Edmonton. And applies recommendations from EPS Commitment to Action Community Feedback Report. These measures are indeed promising and it demonstrates that change is happening within EPS. And how it interacts with the community in a more fulsome, constructive and inclusive way. Edmontonians are feeling less safe and their confidence in the police has decreased. Along with an increase in the number of drug poisonings and the increase in homelessness in the city. There is work to be done in this area. The Commission is confident in the EPS's ability to tackle these issues from a policing perspective. Along with the assistance of additional social supports like the Integrated Help Team. Some positives are that the rate of violent crime has decreased by six percent and property crime has decreased by twelve percent. However, still troubling is the fact that one quarter of violent incidents involve knives. And that there has been a thirty percent increase in victims of firearms. However, this report does not just highlight the problems facing policing in Edmonton in general. It also offers solutions and provides a roadmap on what EPS plans to do about these issues that are facing our community. EPS has implemented initiatives like opening the Wichita Wind Building to improve interactions with our community. A young people's strategy that's aimed at keeping kids safe and keeping them away from being involved in criminal activities. The implementation of the divisional review boundaries, which resulted in our ten squad model for better service. We've created the help high-risk encampment teams to tackle the proliferation of tent cities within our town. And the controlled entrance challenge to reduce thefts at the liquor stores. In addition, implementing a virtual opioid dependency program. A guns and gang strategy and providing a family support worker for victims of homicide. These are some of the promising tools that will help address some of the biggest issues that are facing Edmonton and that have been identified in this report. Overall, the Commission is pleased with the work done with EPS and advancing the strategic goals set out by the Commission. Related to doing things differently in policing and focusing on outcome-based programming. This report shows the services following through on its commitments to improve community safety and inclusivity in Edmonton. We look forward to reviewing future work and the measurements of the EPS that will be based on our new twenty twenty three twenty to twenty twenty six strategic plan. Thank you, and I'll now turn it over to the service.
Thank you, Chair McDougall. EPS aims to be a forward-thinking police service that strengthens public trust through addressing crime, harm and disorder. One aspect of strengthening public trust is to ensure EPS has a high level of transparency and accountability in how we act. And how we report our progress towards building safer communities. Back in March of twenty 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 one, we presented the twenty, sorry, back in March of twenty twenty two, we presented the twenty twenty one EPS annual report. Which is available publicly on the E P C website as one of the many key accountability documents EPS uses. Today, we will give council an overview of the comprehensive accountability, planning and reporting framework. Used at EPS that are rooted in legislation, empirical research and industry best practices, next slide. Slide before that, sorry. Alberta and EPS have a well-defined governance structure that is laid out within two key documents. The Police Act as well as the Policing Standards. These documents outline the government of Alberta's role in governing policing and specifically how the EPS will be governed by an independent police commission. The Police Act mandates the government of Alberta to ensure that adequate and effective policing is maintained. Police services are required to have standards for the following four categories. Organizational management, this includes planning, financial management and internal audits. Personal administration, including recruitment and selection, training, performance evaluation and professional standards. Operation services, including crime prevention, criminal investigation, traffic safety, pursuits and disaster planning and use of force. And support services, including victim witness assistance, high-risk incidents, people in custody. Media relations and facilities and equipment. City council sets the total budget for local policing, is responsible for collective bargaining, working with city staff. Determines the size and makeup of the local police commission and appoints all members of the police commission, next slide. EPS also operates under a well-defined and robust accountability framework that requires the service to submit various documents to both the government of Alberta and the Edmonton Police Commission. The Director of Law Enforcement's main responsibilities are monitoring police services to ensure that adequate and effective policing is maintained. Monitoring and handling the complaints by police services and directing police services on the process for investigation of serious incidents involving police officers. As well as developing and promoting crime prevention programs, developing and promoting training and performance standards. Assisting in the coordination of policing services and assisting and advising municipal governments and commissions. The Alberta Law Enforcement Review Board's primary role is to hear appeals from individuals who have fled, who had filed complaints about the actions of a police officer. And who are not satisfied with the disposition of their complaint. The Board's role is to conduct an independent and impartial review of the decisions made by police services about complaints. The Board also hears appeals by police officers resulting from any disciplinary findings. EPS has an oversight of its actions by the Edmonton Police Commission. Which is a diverse body appointed to represent the citizens of Edmonton. The E P C oversees the police service, responds to citizens' concerns on policing matters and helps develop the EPS strategic plan and budget. As well as build a positive relationship with community partners. EPS provides regular updates to the E P C on several topics, including use of force, occurrences, training and actions taken to increase diversity and recruit selection. The E P C is directly involved in the oversight and accountability of all police officers and insignificant decisions regarding equipment procurement. EPS is also regulated or monitored through several other sources and statutes, including the Charters of Rights and Freedoms, the Criminal Code of Canada, Alberta Police Act, provincial and federal case law. Provincial standards and the Alberta Serious Incident Response Team. As well as our Alberta Association of Chiefs of Police and the Alberta Association of Police Governance. In addition, EPS has established the Professional Standards Branch as a standalone internal evaluative body to investigate internal and external complaints. EPS also has our Equity and Workplace Harassment Unit that is also a standalone body to investigate any harassment issues that fall on protected grounds. Next slide. This slide shows the numerous accountability documents that EPS submits to E P C and the cadence in which they are provided. The reports shown with an asterisk are ones that are available on the E P C website, next slide. In order for an organization to be held accountable, they must first understand what it is they are responsible for and what they intend to achieve. EPS has a very defined planning framework that allows it to plan out what needs to be done, measure its progress and make adjustments as needed to ensure the strategy will be met. EPS framework aligns well with planning best practices as cited in the Sustainable Policing Framework. Which suggests police services planning framework should contain the four pillars of visioning, planning, implementation and evaluation. The Sustainable Policing Framework was developed in twenty fifteen by a Canadian academic at Carleton University. And in twenty twenty, this framework was used to evaluate the strategic plans of twenty-three Canadian police services. At each stage within the planning framework, there are checkpoints to ensure EPS is doing the right things and to assess if we are making the progress we want, next slide. EPS strategic plan is our North Star that outlines what it is we intend to achieve to increase community safety. The Sustainable Policing Framework mentioned previously combines various theories of planning and management control processes to identify components that a police service strategic plan should contain. The twenty to twenty-three to twenty twenty-six EPS strategic plan contains all the necessary components to be considered a gold star plan against the criteria of the framework. Information on this slide is critical as strategic planning is actioned in an organization to address the kinds of challenges police services are facing today. With growing public demands and greater expectations for police accountability, our planning framework shows the alignment of what our service is trying to achieve and how we will achieve it. This is also linked to community engagement to ensure that we incorporate community feedback into the work we do. The process of planning and following our planning framework has been critical during this time of uncertainty. And supporting our leadership team to continue to work towards our goals in a manner that is consistent with our stakeholder feedback. While being as efficient as possible in holding ourselves accountable, next slide. When it comes to reporting on our strategy, EPS has a very robust corporate performance management framework. This framework has two overarching purposes. Firstly, it's to inform EPS management on the overall progress of our strategy and achieving the outcomes we want. EPS holds a strategic offsite twice a year to reflect on where we are and pivot if necessary to address emerging needs or if we're not achieving what we intend to. Secondly, it is to drive accountability and transparency by reporting on police operations to E P C, public officials and Edmontonians. EPS has made considerable improvements in our planning and reporting framework since twenty nineteen and will continue to mature in how we measure our performance. Next slide. The measures used within the EPS corporate performance framework are fluid and evolving to match the context of policing in Edmonton. How we choose which measures to include within the framework. Includes compliance with the Police Act and the Alberta Provincial Policing Standards is in alignment with the corporate performance management framework. The Canadian Police Performance Management Framework to allow consistent reporting and comparability of performance of police services across Canada. And to enable the monitoring and measuring of progress against our strategic goals. EPS is taking its performance framework and going beyond traditional police metrics for performance assessment. Traditional metrics include output measures such as number of tickets written or measures such as the Crime Severity Index. Which are all still measures that EPS monitors, but we are moving to a more comprehensive framework that combines these traditional measures with with additional measures such as perception of police and more community-focused measures. Next slide. EPS is a large and complex organization. To account for that, our corporate performance framework includes measures at different levels within the organization to serve different audiences' needs and level of detail in reporting. At the highest level, we have our corporate level indicators and measures which track the progress and success of our strategy. Results against these measures are publicly reported. At the bureau and division level, we have measures more suitable for management to track the operations of EPS and the individual mandates of the bureaus and divisions. And finally, we have our very specific level of measures to track the progress and success of programs and projects that are being run within branches. Next slide. As you can see, we have a comprehensive measurement system through the entirety of EPS with measures, accountable parties and sources of reports at all levels. Our goals and corresponding initiatives were identified in the EPS twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two strategic plan. While targeted outcomes were laid out in our twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two business plan. EPS leadership provides an update on its business plan to the Edmonton Police Commission twice a year in March and in September. An update is also provided to the E P C on the strategic plan once a year in March. This annual report functions as a public update on the progress made towards our goals and outcomes. Timely information on crime statistics and trends is also available to the public via the Community Safety and Data Portal. Next slide. I'd like to turn our attention to key accountability documents for EPS now, which is our twenty twenty-one annual report. As mentioned previously, the annual report was presented back in March, it is also available on the E P C website. What I'd like to walk council through right now are the measures that were defined to track progress against the goals in the strategic plan. Please keep in mind that with the publication of our twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-six strategic plan, these measures will be changing to adapt to the city needs and safety trends. Next slide. EPS uses a variety of measures to track progress. For this presentation, we have categorized measures by which pillar of the Canadian Police Performance Measurement framework they align with. Next each measure, you'll see the associated outcome as well as which goal in our strategic plan they fall under. Our first pillar is crime and victimization. Measures under this category gauge progress that police activities have made in reducing or containing crime rate and victimization. These measures are also used to deploy resources geographically by area of needs and observed trends. Highlights in twenty twenty-one in this area include a seventeen percent reduction in overall crime. For the last three years, violent crime rates and non-violent crime rates decreased. Of note, Edmonton's crime rate fell faster than the provincial and national average despite the impacts of COVID nineteen. Volume of violent crime decreased between twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-one and severity of violent crime has increased between twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-one. So while the number of reported crimes decreased, the level of violence within the crime has increased. And we are also starting to see the number of reported crimes increase as well as calls for service, next slide. Second pillar of the Canadian Police Performance Measurement framework is police activities and deployment. Measures in this category address how police activities contribute to public safety more broadly. Highlights in this area include a decreasing trend in dispatch calls for service from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-one. Though the severity of violent crime has increased, as mentioned on the previous slide. An increase in severity can mean that calls can be more complex and this is what our officers are seeing on the ground every day. So even though our dispatch calls for service have decreased, our workload has not gone down. The more severe the crime, the more effort that has to be put into it. A decrease in occurrences and suppression zones from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-one, which means EPS's ability to use data and intelligence to identify locations. And deploy appropriate resources to reduce crime, harm and disorder. As well as we highlighted eight hundred and eighty-nine referrals from our help program. EPS has also moved to addressing breaches differently as they often perpetuate the arrest, remand, release cycle, next slide. The third pillar of the Canadian Police Performance Measurement framework is public trust. This category comprises of measures that assist in gauging trust, confidence and public perception of EPS. Misconduct and public complaints are an important measure for this pillar as it speaks to a willingness to hold the police accountable for actions. Public complaints can also fluctuate based on a variety of environmental factors, including social and economic conditions. Median time to conclude a police investigation highlights how long it takes for a member of the public to know the results of a formal investigation. This number increased sharply during the pandemic with due to COVID nineteen related impacts and limited access to services and resources. As things have reopened, we are seeing this number trend down and fall in line. While we are seeing use of force reports increasing, the severity of use of force used is decreasing. This is an important measure that EPS carefully monitors to consider required training opportunities. An important consideration with this measure is that EPS's reporting process has recently changed. Every officer involved in an event now files an independent report. That means that the more reports, this will generate more reports and this is why we are seeing an increase. But in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, less than one percent of total occurrences resulted in a controlled tactic use of force. Next slide. The fourth and final pillar of the Canadian Police Performance Measurement framework is resources, which is intended to measure personnel expenditures and other data on items such as civilianization and diversity. Diversity of the workforce is an important aspect of this pillar, which is why we've included a measure related to diversity within senior ranks. We're committed to ensuring that diverse individuals who join EPS have opportunities grow and advance. This is a relatively new measure and we will be closely monitoring it moving forward. Likewise, the proportion of sworn to civilian employees also assist us in tracking diversity. Next slide. To give you an idea of the workload that EPS experiences daily, we are highlighting a few elements. EPS evaluates a call every forty-five seconds. We have a call for service every three minutes. We lodge a person every hour. On average, we have forty-two domestic violence reported in occurrences every day. And on average, we have one firearm event a day. EPS helped teams, help teams supported eight hundred and thirty-eight community members in twenty twenty-one, leading to an average of two community members diverted from the criminal justice system every day. The twenty twenty-one annual report highlighted some key outcomes and measures for the EPS. In twenty twenty-one, we did see a reduction in crime in Edmonton that was above the provincial and national average. We also knew that this was suspected to change with the opening and recovery of COVID. As mentioned on our previous slide, we started to see crime involving violence increasing and our data shows us that this is still the case. We know that violence is trending up and as we near the end of twenty twenty-two, we will be taking a deeper analysis into our data. We have recently re-profiled positions in the organization to be able to give additional capacity to patrol. Which to address these trends, which has has us implementing our ten squad model which just took in effect on Sunday. We will be presenting our twenty twenty-two annual report to E P C in March of twenty twenty-three and that will be available publicly. With that, I will turn it over to any questions in the next slide.
Well, thank you so much for the for the presentation, really, really appreciate all the detailed information you have have provided. And now we will open up questions from members of council and please sign up. I know Consular Rice selected this, but she told me earlier on that anyone can go ahead with questions. I think Consular Tang, you requested this information, why don't you start with you?
Sure.
Why not?
All right, well, thank you very much for this comprehensive report. There's a lot to, there's a lot to glean and you do this every year with the Commission. But this is the first time you've reported to council, is that right?
Yes, yes, and this report is actually the first time in this format that we've reported to Commission in twenty twenty-one because we had redone our planning framework quite extensively.
Format in terms of releasing it publicly and?
Not releasing it publicly, but we used to have what we called our annual policing plan. And it presented measures and actions that the police service had undertaken, but they weren't coordinated and they weren't in line with the the Canadian Police Performance Management Framework. So in order to compare ourselves and tell a better story, we we completely redid what this report looks like.
Gotcha, and and just in the last, the funding formula Gotcha. And and just in the last, um, the fun- the funding formula discussion, I recall one of the things was that we would be seeing our annual report like this at with council and, you know, EPC every year. Is that right? It'll be in this format?
Yeah, it it will be in a format like this. We're continuously looking at how to improve the way that we tell our story and the measures we share, but yes.
And and of course, you know, as you've you've said, policing is always evolving, and what we see this year will look somewhat different from the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty six strategic plan. I'm wondering if you can highlight some of the areas that that we might expect some key differences.
So one of the biggest differences in our updated strategic plan is we added another goal, and that was based on community feedback and it's connect, uh, share and evolve. So we've heard that we want, we've heard from the community that there is a a need to share more, uh, be more transparent, have more communication and have that two-way communication. So we would continue basically with our community engagement as we have, but have a highlighted goal in our strat plan around that.
Okay, that's a, that's good to hear. I'll be, I'll be keeping an eye out for that. And I I I'm wondering if you can elaborate a little bit more on this feedback loop with community. Um, you have three councils, you know, do they, how how are they involved in this process of identifying the measurements, which, you know, you have a lot of legislation and strategies that informs that? And I'm wondering how the how the community piece kind of comes in through a feedback loop.
So one of the things that we did in twenty twenty that we highlighted was our commitment to action, and that really formed the basis of our first strategic plan. And then we've been doing ongoing engagement sessions with our our councils. But this year was the beginning of launching those councils. So we're there just kind of getting up and running and getting going. And then we've done a couple of sessions this year where we did um another commitment to action session. And then we also did a session in the summer on what we were planning on presenting to our police commission on our budget. And so as we move into twenty twenty three, we're going to be um presenting to our commission how we're gonna, our public engagement plan for that year. And in terms of the councils recommending measures, we don't actually ask them to recommend what measures because that probably wouldn't be as genuine, and there's a lot of things that we we know we have to measure. But we talk to them about what success looks like for them and and how our services are impacting them so that we can make changes to the way that we deliver our services.
Yeah, thank you. And to Mr. Chair, I'm I'm curious about how a tool like the annual report and the measurements outlined here help the commission to, um, you know, develop the budget with the service.
I think the important part is that the the work that the commission does hand in hand with the service on their strategic plan aligns where we need to go. And when we sit with the service and they bring us their initial plan for a budget, the commission doesn't just sort of say, yeah, there's a check in the box. We've received your budget asked. We sit down and we dissect the budget that they bring us, and we ensure that whatever they're asking for is in line with what our strategic plan and our strategic goals are. So it's a, it's a well thought out. It's not a, uh, it's not a one and done, seen and approved. We, as a commission, put a significant amount of work into ensuring that the budget not only ensures the safety of the city, but that it aligns with what our strategic goals are.
Great, thank you. I I I do have a bit more questions about kind of that process, but I'll come back. Thank you very much.
Good. Thank you, Consul. And Consul Danz?
Thank you. I really enjoyed reading the report. I was interested, just, I want to clarify some of the data here. So priority one and two calls, so person in danger or property in danger, is that correct? That makes about two thousand of the calls, about one point seven percent.
Yep.
And and so when I'm looking at how many calls EPS gets, I look at that number of five hundred and four thousand four hundred and twenty six. Or am I looking at the EPS created events of three hundred and seventy seven thousand? Like, are those separate, like five hundred and four civilian calls, police, three hundred and seventy seven police notice occurrence reported?
So, uh, specifically what what page are you referring to?
Uh, um, it's, it's some of the graphics, the poll graphics, like, I guess I'm, um, it's in the, uh, says total requests for assistance to EPS, five hundred and four thousand. And then there's another one called EPS created events, three hundred and seventy seven thousand.
So maybe if we just take a step back and we go right to the top of how the information starts to come into us.
Yeah.
So as it relates to what we are able to report in this annual report, information that's received in our communication center is the request for assistance to the emergency communication center.
That's the eight hundred thousand.
That's the eight hundred thousand, but not all of those are requests for police assistance. Some of those are for fire or EMS or um other service providers. The five hundred and four thousand is the subset of that eight hundred and forty five thousand that is in the EPS purview. So that's what we are now looking at, either a differential police response to support or deploying resources to support.
Okay.
The three thou- three hundred and seventy seven thousand is the number of CAD events that were created. So that's now in our computer aided dispatch system where we're actually mobilizing officers to respond.
So that is, um, again, from that call triage.
So it comes out of that call, that that tree, yes.
So I took total number of calls, five hundred and four thousand, divide by five hundred and sixty officers on patrol, divide by three hundred and sixty five days a year, and that roughly means that officers respond to about two and a half calls per day. If you're a patrol, you respond to about two and a half calls per day. Is that right?
That's incorrect.
Help me, help me understand that.
That presupposes that every call only requires one officer. So as we've identified, while our call for service in twenty twenty one was decreasing, as was our crime, the severity of violence within that crime was significantly increasing. As those calls become more complex, we are required to attach more and more officers to respond to those calls, one to preserve community safety, to quell the um event, and others to process the scene and undertake the investigation. So to move to a one-to-one ratio of one officer per one call is very erroneous and doesn't reflect our operating picture.
Thank you. So of the operating picture, the two percent of the calls that are person and property, the ninety eight percent, like I look at the vast majority of calls. It's, you know, we, the number of priority fours and priority fives. Um, priority five could be something happened the night before, and that's half of calls in. So, um, could you elaborate on that?
So I can, and thank you for the opportunity. So what you're identifying is actually some limitations of the system that we have in place right now. So, uh, commission and council will remember that back in um January of this year, we actually undertook a modernization of our computer aided dispatch system. And we went from thirty six overarching event types and a hundred and seventy one closing event types to approximately ninety overarching dispatch types and up to eight hundred closing event types. This creates much greater disaggregation or granularity in the information that's characterized in our initial response. So that's, that's part number one. Part number two in that CAD modernization is our call prioritization does not map to the national uniform call for service standard. That Statistics Canada is going to be operationalizing in January one of twenty twenty three. Part of that issue is our call prioritization matrix doesn't include things like officer initiated work. It doesn't include things like proactive projects that our offices are undertaking. That reprioritization um will go live in early twenty twenty three in our CAD, and we will be much more fulsome in being able to report to you the priority of the event at initial dispatch versus the priority of event after our officers have responded and have identified actually what the situational specifics and circumstances were of the event that they responded to.
I'm out of time, but I have more questions. Thank you for this.
Yeah, no problem. Come for the second round. Uh, Consul Stevenson?
Yes, thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation and the report, and that's actually a great place to um to pick up on. So, so a a couple of questions there. In terms of the the calls for service, I noticed that we don't have a measure that's reported on in terms of the priority call responses meeting their target timelines. Just wondering why that was and and if that information is available.
So from a priority one response perspective, and I I think that's where you're going with response times.
Well, I I think response times across, because I think all all of the priorities do have a a target response time. So, you know, there's interest, I think, across all of those.
So the standard for us to actually measure response time starts with the call for service coming into EPS. So it's at that second, a nine one one call enters the uh the switch for our um commu- emergency communication center. For us to actually measure the the um true um process, we have to measure the time that we receive it, the number of rings that go unanswered, the time that our communicator picks it up. That's the stop of the first section. Then we start the second section, which is the amount of time it takes our complaint taker or our processor to receive the information and put it into a computer aided dispatch system so we can start to mobilize our resources. And then the third part of that is transferring the call to dispatcher, and then in a priority sequence, moving that out to our frontline for response from the time that it is dispatched till the time the officer goes unseen. So those three elements actually make up our fulsome priority response time, and we can do that then against every priority. The issue that we have right now is we have to retool our systems in order to capture each of those significant um data points.
Do we, do we currently have that data for for some of those segments?
For some of the segments we do, but it it's creating an incomplete picture. So with changes to our emergency communication center and changes to our computer aided dispatch um system, we will in fairly fairly short order have all of the ingredients to give a fulsome report on response times.
Okay, uh, that's great. And so the intent is that that information would be included uh moving forward in the future. Great.
And across all response priorities, not just the priority ones, yes.
Yes, great. And well, and I think you also touched on a really important one, which is, um, again, sort of that, the assessment at the initial call and then the the follow-up officer assessment. Um, and I, my understanding is that uh there there are times when uh EPS is responding to a call, and ultimately it's sort of not not deemed to be a police, uh, a police response maybe wasn't needed. It was more of a social, uh, social service need there. Uh, will that information be available in terms of uh the the volume and the the frequency of those determinations?
So that in part comes out of the overarching dispatch type. Our officer responds, they do the investigation, and then they identify the closing event type that most closely represents what that call for service or that crime was. That helps us get to that level of granularity. But there will also be times where what the officer was initially dispatched to, more information comes in, it changes the context or the priority of what we responded to, and it escalates our response.
Absolutely. Or or the same thing that if, um, you know, maybe crisis diversion two-on-one response to something, but then it it's actually deemed that, no, we we do need EPS presence there.
Correct. Or we start with crisis two-on-one, and as they respond, they actually get into a um scenario where they require EPS assistance. And now that ends up being a higher call to assist the individuals who are already engaged in that event, then potentially it could have been if we had just dispatched EPS resources. So it it gives us the fulsome context of of what we're responding to.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think that that information is so so important, you know, as we work together, the right resources, the right calls. And then I think that's, you know, a question that I have, you know, sitting, sitting with my council hat on, is, you know, what are some of the investments that that EPS um and the commission would like council to prioritize to help reduce some of that, that call volume, that that pressure on EPS? Yeah, in line with the strategic plan in terms of, you know, working in partnership, working with the the broader social services.
So I I think in fairness to the entirety of the Edmonton Police Service, that really gets into a strategy and budgeting question. I don't think that we're prepared to answer that in the context of an annual report review.
Okay, no worries. I'll I'll come back for some more questions, but thank you.
Thank you, Consul Stevenson. Consul Rice?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Sohe. And then, so I would like to put the motion on the floor and before my question and for this, uh, report and receive for the information.
Maybe let's, let's go through one round of questions for all council members, right? Then we can move the, it's an information report, then we can move it.
Yes, this information received.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Um, so it's really, really great to see the detailed reports. And then, thank you for the presentation. So I would like my question focus on the outcome and impact and for the public. So the first one, and then, can you tell me the, how many divisions cross city? And for the, from EPS?
How many divisions are across the city? There's, there's six.
So is the sixth entire city, we have only six divisions? And for me to ask this question because related to the next question. And then I heard and from what I spoke to Edmontonians, and the response, response time and is efficient. So that no doubt, and then the uh the question is about after the response. And then when we are Edmontonians waiting for uh police and come actually to do something and on site. I think that waiting time, do we have a specific data to show that waiting time? Or do we have a specific approach and how we determine? And then for certain a type of crimes for the waiting time to, for the police to presents, to present at the site.
So if I can just clarify your question with a question. So are you asking, can we identify by crime type and priority what our actual response time was?
So I'm not, I'm not clear about, and because what I heard, response is very quick. And the phone call, everything is very quick. It's just waiting for the police and come to the site. So that waiting time, it seems is different and is variant. And then can you explain a little bit more about that situation?
Yeah, so if I can maybe explain it by way of an example. So let's use robbery as an example. So we receive a nine one one call for a robbery, and our complaint taker receives the information. And in the context of the first call for robbery, it just occurred. There was an injury to an individual, and they require immediate assistance. That will have a different response time than the second robbery that was a, an individual who was um in a a certain area of the city, and they ended up getting forced to the ground and having their backpack forcibly removed. And that happened three days ago, but that victim is calling in today. So both of those are robberies, but the situational specifics, the immediacy of intervention, the potential for violence is significantly different in both scenarios, which is why one would have a significantly faster response time than the other one.
Um, I I think right now, and from my understanding, or also from my interaction and with some like residents, and I think the challenge piece is waiting and for police to come to the site and then respond and a phone call answer very efficient. I just want, I I may, I may come back and for other type of questions to get more clarification. Um, so my next question is about, I heard lots of good things about public transit safety in increase and due to uh the police and then, for example, and that I regularly see the two police officer at the Central Park station. And so, so I just want to understand that for that approach is proactive or reactive for our police and on the public transit and specific on certain stations?
So it's not one or the other, it's both. So part of how we um identify where to most effectively deploy our resources is to look in the rearview mirror and see what has been happening in those geographies. And based on prioritization with of our finite resources, where we can best allocate them for um our most effective impact. But while they're, while they're deployed, they are taking both reactive or citizen generated calls for service where the public is calling us. But they're also engaging and they're doing their own effort in doing the officer initiated proactive work.
I will come back. My time is out.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Consul Rice. Consul Redford?
Great. Thank you for the report. Uh, I'm going to focus on the commission and and my questions to the commission, who is the direct link with with council. You received this report in March, correct, of this year?
Correct.
And so in in receiving this report and this information from EPS, in what ways has the police commission practiced their oversight role?
in what ways has the police commission practiced their oversight role? What kind of things came out of that presentation, for example?
I think if you uh can reflect back on the slide that was presented on all the reports uh that we receive and the frequency that we receive them. Those reports are what guide our governance and oversight, whether it's a use of force, whether it's response time. Whatever the uh measurements are, those reports are what we use to ensure that we are providing that good governance and oversight. As well as our finance and audit committee. We meet and we get updates on the budget expenditures, expend expected shortfalls. So that's the best way that we get is through those reports.
Okay, so for example, when it says that the public is losing confidence in EPS, that's what the twenty twenty one report said. What is the commission's response to that and what actions were taken as a result of that being an outcome? That was in that report as an example.
So, I mean, I I think everybody's disappointed at the increase in in the severe crimes, the knife crimes and the firearm crimes. Um, the fact that overall crime is down twelve percent is helpful. Um, however, these are the issues that we take with the service. Knowing full well that there's a line between what we can do from a governance and oversight perspective and what we can, what the service can do from an operational perspective. So we can provide governance saying, this is an issue, how do you wish to address this? We can't say, we need you to put fourteen police officers on the corner of Jasper and a hundred
Oh, and I I definitely don't, I and I I want to be clear that I'm not talking about, I'm talking about confidence in police. So if if that and and according to the EPS's own framework, like doing better and getting and instilling public trust, transparency are in their strategic goals. And you're seeing in that report that confidence is down. What role does the commission play in providing oversight to guide to reversing that that trend? Or what conversations are having about, are being had about that?
I think the opportunity to do a quick turnaround in public perspect- public perception is is uh not an easy task, nor is it a quick task. What we do is we help ensure the service has programs set up similar to the health program. Um, to the new building that we opened downtown that helps us address issues and inequities with the indigenous population to help ensure that we get involved with implementing everything from the missing and murdered indigenous women and children. Uh, from our Soji council, um from all these, the three councils that the service has set up to get that feedback, to figure out through those agencies what we can do better.
Okay, so let's give an example then. So um, one thing I found interesting the other day is that the community safety map that the EPS publishes used to go back five years. Now it only goes back ninety days. What what says EPS or the commission about that? Because to me, if that data readily went back to five years and showed crime trends per neighborhood, and now it only goes back ninety days, that to me seems like we're going in the opposite direction of public transparency.
So if I can uh take that question. So I think you need to know what went into that crime map first. It is not comparable to what we used to report. Our old crime map for the city of Edmonton only reported on eight crimes. It was the key eight crime indicators as we we phrased it. Our crime map today reports out on all crime, and it is being tooled up right now to also report out on all calls for service. Part of the ongoing engagement that we have with the city of of Edmonton, with our um citizens, is we have to close the communication feedback loop. We have to share the proper context of exactly what we're facing as a police service in response to their expressed needs. The reason that that crime map today only goes back ninety days is because the quantum of the information that we put into that map eclipses what was in the old system. And we had to evaluate what the usage of that map was, we had to evaluate what the query processing horsepower on that system was. And when we launched that new map, it was tied to the new call for service and crime categorization that was launched in January of this year. That data is not comparable to the historic data. Over time, you will be able to go back multiple years in our new call for service and crime map that's available through the community safety data portal.
Perfect, thank you. I'm out of time.
Uh, Constable Salvador.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And um, thank you very much for the presentation this morning. Uh, I just want to pick up on Constable Stevenson's last question around what types of initiatives, programs and supports would would the service um or or commission like to see move forward during budget? And, you know, I understand that providing, you know, exact profiles or packages might be, might be challenging, but uh Chair McDougall, you did mention the importance of seeing sort of more more broad support across the entire community safety and wellbeing ecosystem. And I I'm wondering, without pointing to specifics uh items, can you, can you just speak broadly to what types of supports would be helpful in reducing some of the pressures and demands that um that are being placed on service?
I think there's a lot of issues we can look at to help resolve that. Um, but again, I think we'll be discussing this more next month when we have our budget discussions. And this is a discussion on our annual report.
Right, and I I guess, I just, I appreciated your comment around seeing that more sort of broad holistic perspective applied to to this conversation. And uh I just wonder if you can elaborate on on what you were referencing? When you did speak to, you know, seeing support alongside uh EPS.
Uh, again, I think this isn't the venue to get into what we can spend on to make difference. Overall, I think any social agencies that can be engaged that would decrease calls for service uh would be more than welcome.
Thank you. Um, and then I I was also wondering, so I found the um the contrast between uh public perceptions of of crime, you know, in increasing, uh yet overall crime decreasing. And uh I'm wondering if you could speak a little bit about, you know, what role does the service play in in public communications to to help build that confidence and to to share that accurate information around uh what trends we're seeing?
So I think one of the things that we tried to highlight was that even though we saw a a decrease in the occurrences of 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 crime, the severity was increasing, and so that plays um a role in how communities feel their perception of safety is bigger than police, but we try to. One of the things that we did actually do on the direction of our police commission was, we used to survey our o- ourselves on perception of police and feelings of safety through the insight community in the city of Edmonton. And the results were actually really high, and so we changed that methodology. And this is the, that's the results you see in this annual report, to be a random sample that is representative of Edmontonians. So that we could have a more um appropriate method for measuring that. And so then sharing those results and then continuing to share the business plan that we have and the measures and our data safety portal and continuing the conversations through community engagement or or how we're trying to have those conversations with community around their perceptions of safety and what we're doing about it.
Okay, thank you for that answer. Um, and then just, this is probably a quick one, but uh it feels like we've been talking about the integrated call evaluation and dispatch for a really long time. And I'm just interested to hear where we're at in in implementing that and what we can expect for timeline there.
Right now, um and I I have to make, I'll go and double check this um to give you a fulsome answer. But I know we're continuing to civilianize our our dispatch center, and we have a project manager assigned to this work, and they're working with partners. And so that work is ongoing. Um, I don't have the exact timelines with that with me.
Okay, that's that's okay. I I'd just be interested in seeing that. Um, and then one, one last question. Uh, recognizing that dispatch calls for service have decreased, but the complexity has increased. Uh, I'm just trying to understand that complexity. So when you're, when you're referring to complexity, are you referring to increases in in violent crime that um that officers are attending to? Or are these complex calls associated with having to, you know, coordinate with other agencies, do various, you know, degrees of of handoffs? Can you speak to that? Or do we even have that information, I guess, is what I should ask?
So we can dive into um each of the areas, but you're right on both fronts. So in our call for service demands, as the demands increases and the um requirements of the individuals involved in those occurrences um are um significantly more complex. And so too is the amount of effort um increasing to go in to serve the needs of those individuals. And that spans not just the crime side of our response, but also of the call for service side.
Okay, I'm out of time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Constable Salvador. So the Constable Prince, can you take the chair, please?
Yes, I have the chair.
Thank you. Uh, first of all, congratulations on um um being more diverse uh organization, attracting people from uh different backgrounds. I think it's very important that uh that EPS, which is integral part of community safety and wellbeing, uh continues to reflect the diversity of 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 residents. So congratulations on on that. Uh, my question is related to the 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 increase in robberies, right? And the uh, I think it's twenty eight percent. Uh, what is, what is, what's some of the dri- what is the drivers? Like, what, why is it that we are seeing more and more robberies?
So that is a very complex question um that the data that's in front of us won't give us the answer to. So if you're looking for more causation information, we can go back and we do, we can do that um analysis.
Yeah, okay. I guess that, um, what I'm interested in understanding is the the reasons. Uh, cause then if we, if we don't know the cause, then uh we would not be as effective in giving the solution. So I was kind of trying to understand that. And also the uh part of that would be or is the correlation between robberies and uh and social issues like houselessness? Uh, or poverty, right? Uh, that's what I'm trying to understand.
So those are much more complex questions for for us to answer when we get into um correlation causation. Um, we would have to take that away and and see what we can get out of our data. Okay, but what you identify, Mr. Mayor, is really um why it is so important for us to be able to link not just police data with other social service data, but police data with other community service provider data. Cause we have different services that are being provided to, in many respects, address some of the same causation. And sometimes when that causation is um not addressed effectively, it manifests in um EPS call for service. So if we have an ability to link those sources of data for a very um complete picture that's in context relative to the individuals involved, then we can build better outcomes.
Okay, I I would be interested in that, cause that also ties into data around who are the people interacting with the EPS, whether they're racialized people or indigenous or like, I think, just trying to understand that big picture of of the challenges that we're facing in uh in in the, in in the city. Uh, my next question is related to the perception. Like, we hear a lot from the downtown business community, residents in downtown. Uh, is downtown safety improving? I just want to know, like, overall, are you seeing improvements in the downtown and Chinatown?
So are you asking in the context of the twenty twenty one annual report, or in the context of what we're facing now?
Well, maybe both, like, is, like, where, cause I, I just want to make sure that people are not believing something that is not the case. It's just what I'm to understand, right? It's just, is it perception, is it reality? Like, what is it?
So I I think it's important to contextualize that the information that's contained in the twenty twenty one annual report in seven weeks is going to be a year old.
Okay, yeah, of course, yeah.
Many of the trends that are identified are not our realization today. We know that we have significant increases in both calls for service and crime across the city. Downtown will be no different. We also have significant increases against twenty twenty one, and we were identifying in twenty one that we had um increases in the violence within the crime that was being perpetrated. That trajectory continues to um increase as it relates to the violence within crime that we're experiencing in the city. So from a um perspective, um perceptions um focus, I understand where residents are um coming with concern as it relates to the rate and violence or rate and severity of crime that's being experienced.
So there's, I know this is twenty twenty one, right, and we're end of twenty twenty two, so I understand that lag time, right? So so the twenty twenty two report will be presented in March of twenty twenty three? Is that, if I heard you correctly? To the, to the commission, right?
Sorry, uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, that's correct. The annual report for twenty twenty two will be reported in March.
And then at that time, it becomes public as well for anyone to see, right?
Yeah, and if we um stay consistent with um what we did in twenty one, there will be opportunity through the chief of police who will share the twenty twenty two year in review in advance of the annual reporting process.
Got it. Thank you so much. And I will take the chair, uh, sorry, Constable, uh, I'll move the second round uh of questions.
Second.
Please vote.
We're just sending the vote out. I'm a yes. Thank you, Constable Salvador.
It's not popping up on my screen for some reason, and I'm the right describe, so but I'm a yes, yeah.
Thank you. We have all the votes, Deputy Mayor.
Please display the vote, and that is carried. I'll pass the chair back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much. Uh, so we're going into into second round, and maybe at this time I'll ask Constable Rice if you want to move the to receive for information.
Yes, yes, Mayor Sohee.
Need a seconded? Constable Tank, seconded, okay. Okay, all right, Constable Tank's seconded. Okay, now a second round of questions. So, okay, where's, here you go. Constable Tank, you're first.
Great, thank you so much. Um, yeah, some of those questions popped up, a few more for me. And just on this piece, uh, I'll start with the piece around um you know, wanting to make sure our our measurements are constantly reflective of the coordinator work and the kind of, you know, that EPS, uh, the policing is part of that broader ecosystem. Um, I'm actually very interested in that work, and I was wondering, um, I I mean, I know it's difficult. It's very complex, there's lots of players to coordinate, but like, what what do you need to force to get there? Where is that we're currently at? And what do you need to to get to that stage where we have data sets that recognizes that when when the issue occurs, it's not just a policing outcome, it's, you know, multiple factors. Um, you have an outcome here that's about, um you know, we're using evidence and data to determine root causes to prevent crime. So something like that, you know, I think there's lots of different factors that can go into that. So more that ecosystem approach to data and measurement, how do we get there? What do we need? Ms. Lawrence.
So to go back to what Executive Director Tout had mentioned earlier, was one of the things we need is access to our partners' data. And so as we continue to move towards the goals we're trying to achieve, it's really important that we have the right partners and that we have collective outcomes and that we can share that data.
I'm just, and I'm just wondering if access is such a challenge, um, cause I know this has been a conversation for eons. What about synthetic data? I understand, you know, the the foundations working in some space as when it comes to cha- the, you know, the challenge and all that. How are we leveraging synthetic data for that?
Thank you for your question. Um, I'm not sure that the use of synthetic data is actually going to get us to identifying specific root causes and optimal intervention opportunities for individuals. It helps us deal with kind of the the averages, um, but when we're actually getting drilling into how do we best support individuals, we have to be able to link the individual data across systems.
Fair enough, thank you. Um, and then coming back to Mr. Chair McDougall, um, you know, not being able to tune into every commission uh meeting. I guess I'm just curious about the conversation we're reviewing this uh annual report, which I think is really important in terms of telling us, are we uh, do we have a good police service? Are we, you know, getting the value uh for for the dollars that we invest? Um, I'm curious about what some of those conversations are. I'm curious about what some of those conversations are, are at among commissioners. You know, do you see this being adequate? What are some gaps in measurement? You know, what, what, what needs to evolve further? And I, and I know that there is a strategic plan coming, but I'm just curious about some of those high-level conversations at the commission level.
One of the strengths that goes into making our strategic plan is that the service and the commission sit together and brainstorm what needs to be done. And while we provide governance and oversight, it's the police that specialize in policing. So when we say the community wants to see this, we rely on the service to come up with a means to, to get that data, measure it, and ensure that it's going to give outcomes or, or the outcomes of those measurements are actually going to be able to affect how policing is done or decrease crime or make Edmonton safer. So it's those discussions that we have as a commission on what works and what doesn't work.
And I'll just maybe give a specific example. So for example, I think it's great that we're moving towards greater diversity. But one thing that sort of I was wondering about is what about the retention rate for those officers who are women, indigenous, or racialized? And I don't know if that's something, I mean, I don't see that being tracked here, maybe not disaggregated at that level. But I'm just wondering, that's a kind of, I think, potentially gaps that might come through that generative conversation you're talking about. I, my time is limited, so I just have one last, just thought around, you know, Safer For All has been around for several years. EPS was part of that body of work. And I'm wondering, sort of moving forward, how do you see those recommendations or findings continuously being integrated into annual reporting process?
So through the work that was done for Safer For All, we have, and we're focusing on the twenty twenty-one annual report. So the performance measures that were recommended, we went through and took a look at those. And about fifteen of those were actual performance measures. And, and at least twelve of them are represented in our annual report. And then the other ones are more output measures or measures that just aren't going to be something appropriate for police. But for what we could incorporate, we have done so.
Awesome. Thank you very much for, for this presentation.
Thank you, Councillor Tang. Councillor James?
Thank you. I want to get into clearance rates. Could you clarify what, how do you define a clearance rate? It's in your, in the, as per the report.
So there's a number of aspects that, that go into clearance. So it can be cleared by charge. It can be cleared by officer discretion. It can be cleared by diversion, pre-charge diversion, or post-charge. It can be also cleared by the death of the individual responsible. So there's a number of different clearance coding variables that prescribe to the national standard that we have to report to StatsCan.
Right. So when it talks about clearance rates, violent versus non-violent crime, how are we doing?
So I don't have that information in front of me, but that's something that we're adding to annual reporting going forward.
So I heard about a case, somebody had stole thirty catalytic converters. Unfortunately, charged officer arrested them, charged them, but unfortunately, and I don't have the language here, but it was, the judge said, I can't do anything with this. You only gave me enough to, to, to look at one of the cats. So we, the other story, where even though it's possible, this, this person really enjoys collecting converters, couldn't do anything with it. So is that a clearance? Like, did, did, how do we know, like, when the cops stood their side and the judge let them down, or the, not the judge, the prosecution let them down, when the cops didn't do their side and the prosecution doesn't have enough to go on? How do, like, how do, a clearance rate just seems a, a stat, but what's, can you unpack that a little further?
So there are different thresholds that govern a police decision versus a Crown Attorney decision versus a court decision. So when we get to a point where we have reasonable grounds to believe that an individual is responsible for a crime, that's the threshold that allows us to apply a, a clearance to it. The Crown threshold is reasonable prospect of conviction. So when we meet our threshold and we decide that we want to pursue this by way of charge, that's where our case becomes the case in the judicial system for the Crown Attorney. So what you're asking is really a Crown Attorney question as it relates to their processing of those investigations, not the clearance on the police side.
So how many unsolved murders do we have in Edmonton?
So again, I don't have that information in front of me, but we can get that for you.
And how many missing persons? Probably, probably the same, you would.
So I don't have that at my fingertips, but we can get that for you. So that's information that we collect.
So how, how do we, like, how, how do we triage? Cause it's really easy to get a high clearance rate doing just street busts of stuff. It's a lot harder to do the homicides and those other higher threshold. Like, how, how do we triage to the most dangerous, most severe crimes?
So now you're starting to tread into call complexity and call severity. So what you're talking about in clearance is rate. So I had one crime, did we clear it? We also look at crime severity. So we've got violent crime and the different categories of violent crime have different severity scores. We have weighted clearance, where we apply the weighting of the crime to the weighting of the clearance. That allows us to create that balance. So we can report out clearance rate as well as weighted clearance on both the property crime and the violent crime side.
I, I really look forward to that. I mean, like, for example, when I saw five hundred and four thousand calls, I thought, wow, that's, that's a lot of calls. But then when I saw only one percent of them actually involve harm to a person, that, that's, you know, maybe thirty calls a day in a city of a million people that may involve harm to a person, I felt actually much safer and much more reassured. So the same thing with this clearance rate, if, you know, it'd be helpful to understand that better, how, how we are targeting, like, the, solving the missing and murdered indigenous women and girls, looking at the murders, looking at the missing persons, those, those most severe, most horrendous cases.
So I need to go back to your, your first comment. So when you're talking about the one percent, you're talking about a call priority. That's the immediacy of our response to the call. That's not the categorization, categorization of the call as it relates to being violent crime or property crime. Not all violent crimes come into us as a party one response. Some of them are historical reports. They come in as a party five response. Some of them are actually reported historically. It happened a year ago or two or three years ago. Those are all still violent crime with victims of violent crime in our city. You're also going back to a one-to-one ratio where one priority equals one victim. We have many crimes where we have multiple victims in the same instance. It's not simple math in one party one call for service equals one violent crime. It is much more complex than that, and we don't pull that data out of our call for service data. We pull that information and context out of our crime data.
Interesting. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor James. Councillor Stevenson?
Yes, thank you. Just, just back on calls, I was wondering if we have any stats that we collect around the non-emergency line? That's something that I've been hearing about from residents, just in terms of their ability to get through on that line and, and what those volumes look like.
So I don't have them in front of me, but we can get those to you. But it's also larger than that, because we also have differential police response. So we have online reporting, online investigations, collision reporting center. All of those are different conduits for accessing supports and services from EPS. We do have an ability to report those out at that level of granularity.
Oh, great. Yeah, I think, I think that information is helpful, just again, thinking of that interface with, with EPS and the public. I want to pivot a little bit now. I was really struck reading through the report at, at this time of the year, looking at the, the goal around EPS members feeling valued. And, and one of those was tied to the professional standards resolution. But there were a few others that were tied directly to budget in terms of compensation. And I just wanted to dig into that, because again, I think that there's a challenge with linking compensation and, and value, just given that, you know, there, there are financial constraints at time. I mean, it's also not something that EPS controls with, with bargaining being held with the city corporation. So maybe just some thoughts on that, and, and also just wondering if EPS has an internal employee satisfaction survey, sort of like the GLINT survey that we have at the city.
So the, the cost of living adjustment and the percent that you see in the annual report was put in there around exactly what you said for people feeling valued. And if we are seeing people leaving the service or we are wanting to be a competitive work force, those are the types of things that we need to monitor, and we are actually struggling with that right now. And some of the positions we're trying to hire, they can go and, and make more money elsewhere, and that's just something that we're watching. Some of these measures will change, though, moving forward into our next strategic plan. And then we do have an employee engagement survey. We're just looking at launching that right away here that we'll be bringing forward to our commission.
Great, thank you. I think, I think having, having a, yeah, a more holistic sense of what, what EPS members need to feel valued and supported, I think is, is important. Just also a question, you know, I do really appreciate the statistics and, you know, the, the diversity that we're seeing in the senior ranks. Just wondering why we're not measuring the diversity of the full workforce?
So right now, there are some limitations in the, the tools that we have to collect information. So this was our first, we, we know it's important for us to measure that. And we decided to look at staff sergeant and above, including managers in our service. But we also do measure our recruit grads, so what comes in from our recruit grad. And then as we move forward with getting enterprise commons and more ability to collect that information, we will be collecting more.
Great, that's, that's great to hear. And collecting and also reporting it in the, in the annual update, wonderful. Maybe again, just going back to, you know, how the, how the public is interacting and the perception. In figure five of the main report, it has a number of the reports. And there's an asterisk that shows which ones are showed on the commission website. Just wondering if there's been an opportunity to revisit and expand which reports are, are made public? And, and I, I should know the answer to this, but just wondering too, if, if the commission is subject to the FLYP regulations in terms of what, what can be kept private and, and what can be made public?
Yeah, thank you, Councillor, I almost said Commissioner. Thank you, Councillor. Yes, Edmonton Police Commission is subject to FLYP provisions. We do follow them. There's always an opportunity to revisit what can be released publicly. And I can take that back and work with the commissioners on, on an assessment like that.
Great, yeah, thank you so much. I think, you know, the, I, I know that there will be some limitations, but I think sort of if the, if the default is that what can be public is public, I, I think can go a long way in some of that, that perception and transparency. Also, on that note, just wondering in the process, for people who maybe are interested and want to, to get involved, what's the process for joining the chief's councils?
So the, all of the councils actually went through an application process at the end of last year. And then there was a robust matrix that our staff, as well as a community member reviewed to select the people that were on all three councils. And some of them actually have been grandfathered in who were on our old councils from before. So as, you know, they kind of retire and move out, we'll continue with that application process and, and bring on new members.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Stevenson. Councillor Rutherford?
Thanks. I'm going to try to do this in one last, one last round, so the responses can be succinct. I'm just a little bit confused, because the narrative that I'm hearing in the presentation today is about, you know, crime rates decreasing, but severity up. But the report that was attached to this agenda says citywide Edmonton continues to experience reductions in both volume and severity of overall crime. Can you rectify that for me, please?
So when we talk about crime and crime severity, we start at the overall level. And that includes all property crime, non-violent crime, and all violent crime. So those are, are put together. But then when we go down, we break it out into the violent crime contribution and the non-violent crime contribution. It's in, within the violent crime contribution that we're seeing increased severity. So that is offset at the average level.
But, but the graph says, it literally says crime severity rate decrease. Isn't that the CSI is the severity of the crimes? So I'm, I'm, I, maybe you're seeing an increase in twenty twenty-two, but we're talking about twenty twenty-one. So I'm just trying to rec, like, is, is this information in the annual report inaccurate? Or what is happening?
No, it's not inaccurate, but there's context that goes with it. So when we talk about overall crime, it's an average of the violent crime and the non-violent crime. Our rate of non-violent crime is higher than our rate of violent crime. So a reduction in non-violent crime rate and the associated severity on the non-violent crime side offsets what we're seeing when you look at it from an average perspective in total crime. But when I look at the violent crime contribution to the overall crime, both from a rate and a violence perspective, it's the severity, the violence within the violent crime that we're seeing significant increases in. That's the concern.
Okay, so if, if I'm just going to try to put this in plain language and see if I understand it, and if you could clarify if my understanding is correct. The overall crime severity rate is down when you look at all crime as a totality. But when you look at the amount of violence in violent, and so like, let's say, domestic violence call, the, the injury maybe, maybe more with a violent weapon as opposed to just, just battery as an example. Is, is my understanding correct?
You are, and that's a good example. Yes.
Okay, that, that helps contextualize it. I really, I really appreciate, I really appreciate that. Because sometimes these numbers are really hard to unpack, quite frankly. So I guess I, my last question is to the Chair. And just how are crime rate and crime severity rates, like, those are indicators within these reports? How does the commission use that in any kind of decision-making or governance oversight? Like, how, how do we use those, those data points? How do you use those data points? Not we. Sorry, I come from a community developer background where we always talk in we's. How do you use those data points?
When we sit with the service and discuss our strategic plan, we look at those numbers and we say, are we putting our efforts in the right areas? And does the service need to examine where they're allocating the best use of, of the service? So those get tied into our conversations, whether it's through our reporting process, when they bring those reports to us, and we have an opportunity to discuss them before they get brought to the commission as a whole or made public. Or whether it's in our opportunities to sit during our strategic plan building. Those come into play and, you know, are we on the right path? Is, is this the right trajectory? And I think that's why it's important that we have these frequent reviews of our strategic plan.
So one thing that, my last question is, in the report that was attached for the October third meeting, the, the one that was commissioned, it says instinctually, it could be assumed that an increase in pol- police officers should reduce crime severity and the number of incidences. This is often not the case, because more police officers can result in more arrests and self-initiated activity, which serves to increase crime statistics. So how will we take that information that was straight from your commissioned report in the context of what will likely be the twenty twenty-two, which I'm anticipating, because there is more patrol on the streets, we would see an increase. Can you, can you speak to that?
Yes, thanks for your question. You're really identifying that context matters. So as I said, we're retooling our call prioritization. And in there, we are adding priorities for officer-initiated work and officer proactive project work. It is that priority tied to, let's say, a robbery, where an officer identified the robbery in progress before it was actually reported or detected. That would come in as one of those scores of the result of our proactive effort. So we will be able to separate those, and our language is citizen-generated or reactive calls for service. That's what we're reporting at, at large now. But going forward, we'll be able to separate that into the citizen-generated and the officer-initiated.
Very interesting. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Rutherford. Councillor Rice?
Thank you, Mayor Sohee. So as one of core services for city EPS provided, that accountability piece in the place is so important. So it's got, it's, it's great to see, and we have accountability framework and embrace. I want to focus my question on the continuous improvement and for these services. So I heard we have six divisions across city and in total. And based on what's, and then population growth, do you have the ratio about each division to serve how many populations?
We don't have that information with us right now.
And that, that information may provide the fundamental factor and the data to understand and how the interaction with our And how the interaction with our community to ensure the community's safety.
So I think we have to be careful if we're only looking at the percentage of population tied to the number of officers or police to population ratio. Because that identifies how many officers we have per the population, but it doesn't identify what our needs are. It also doesn't identify what our priorities are for strategic deployment. So while we can share that information, we'll contextualize it appropriately. Because there are many more diagnostics of community safety that are taken into account in our effective deployment of resources.
Thank you for that, for that information. I would like to say, and can you tell me about some strategy? And then for continued service improvement perspective? And because right now in the community, our Edmontonians really care about the property crime. And then in the evening and how many people come to their cars? And how many people try to lock their doors? And so for that safety feeling, safety perception. And for their daily to, daily quality of life. And then is there any strategy and our EPS and could provide from non-term perspective? And then to give that sense, yes, we are take care of and by our this core services.
So I think there's a, there's a lot to unpack in, in your question. So part of how we build strategies through the ongoing engagement. So sharing what we know with, with our community. So I hearken back to our community safety data portal. That has all property crime on it. So our community can now log in, they can go right down to their neighborhood level. And they can see what those incidents are of property crime are to help inform that perception.
Okay, and, and specifically, and specifically, and then Edmontonians request more police presence and in the community. And I think that is gives her sense to feel more safe.
So I'm not sure if I'm answering your question. But one of the things that we, we, we shared and that we've recently done is implemented our ten squad model to have more officers on the street. And we have moved bodies, bodies basically into patrol for that reason.
So this is one part of, and then the information mentioned in the presentation is about the increased interaction with the community. Is that correct?
So yes, and we'll be able to track that information within our information systems now. Because some of that proactive work, those projects that our offices are undertaking. Is in direct response to some of those identified needs. So we can identify the time on task, the location, the number of resources in our future state when those new parties come online.
That, that's good, that, that's good to, to hurt that information publicly. A, a latter question I have is about interaction with our business community. Because the business, how they feel safe to have the business to, to stay in our city? And specifically in the downtown area, charlatan area, that is very important for our city's economy recovery. So is there any specific plan or action right now for that service improvement?
So one of the things that we do and that we did through our commitment to action was it wasn't just engagement with our marginalized and vulnerable community. It was also with our business community. And, and so we continue to do that and we will continue to do that. We also have an area specifically dedicated to that work and CSWB Bureau.
Thank you, I would like, would appreciate if that information can refract in the report as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Constable Rice. Constable, okay, that concludes the second round, right? So Constable Principay, can you take the chair? Just have a couple of questions.
Yes, I have the chair.
Yeah, I know you, this question was asked, but I just need more clarity in my mind around the, like what? How do you, how we know and track which calls didn't need to be responded by the police, right? And which call could have been responded by a social worker, right? Not by the police. Do we track that? I just need clarity in my mind because maybe it's a budget question. If it's not appropriate this time, I can ask in a different format. But if you think you have, if you think this is the appropriate question at this time, then if you could give me some clarity on that.
So thank you for your question. We don't track how we could have responded. We do track how we did respond.
Okay, so you, so you don't track like whether. Analysis of all the calls that you get in one month or two years or two, two months. Saying, okay, well, maybe this call could have been responded by a different source or different people instead of. A police officer, you don't track that.
So that requires us to do the analysis at the individual call level to look at the situational specifics around each of those calls. That information's available to us because of the detail of the investigation that went into the, the response. We can look at some of those and identify, could there have been a different response if different resources were available? To meet the needs of the individual who was seeking assistance? We can do that analysis.
Okay, that, that will be helpful because this is what we're struggling with, right? It's a, because looking at the whole continuum of community safety and well-being. Which resources, what are the right people to responding to those issues, right? So, and my last question is to the commission chair around the, the report talks about. The, the crime and violent crime increasing in the downtown from 2018 to 2021 part of this report. So being aware of that number and that data, how as a commission? You looked at it and directed or, or asked the police to allocate more resources to the downtown?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We look at crime as a whole, we appreciate there are areas where crime rates are higher. But what we do with these results is, as I said earlier, we sit with the service when we review and, and create our new strategic plans. And we want to ensure that the strategic goals align with what we're seeing in trends. So again, we rely not only on what we see, but on the reports that we receive from the service. And then collectively, we sit with the service, create our strategic plan and strategic goals based off of, of what we see happening for trends. But Lori?
No, that's exactly it. And then it's up to, I mean, it's up to the chief of police to allocate resources.
So what, what did, what did you see increase in the resources, maybe this to the, to the, to the commission chair? Did we see higher police presence in the downtown based on that data?
I don't know if I understand your question, sorry.
There was some talk last year of increasing, of, of whether there was a need to increase officers in the downtown core. But I think that starts to tread into budgetary issues and I don't know.
No, that's fine, maybe I can ask that when we got into the budget. Because, because this is something that we, I, I always hear from the, from the business community that they don't see enough police officers in the, in the downtown. So thank you so much, I appreciate that, okay. And I will move the next, another round of questions.
Second.
Please vote.
Amy, yes.
Thank you, Constable Bicat. We have all the votes, Deputy Mayor.
Please display the vote. And that has carried. I'll pass the chair back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Constable Principay. Constable Janz.
Thank you. Are you able to report on how many police involved shootings there were in 2021?
So I don't have that data in front of me, but we can report on it, yes.
Yeah, that could be a, I mean, an inclusion for next year's report. It'd be great to see year over year there. Are you able to report on how many disciplinary hearings there were?
So that's a different area of organization that tracks that, but they will have that information.
Okay, I think if it was included in the annual report, that would be helpful. I did see there was an increased number of complaints. I'm not sure if that was 21 or 22. But it'd be great to know, okay, so what complaints were made, but then what?
Right, so that is the 2021 information. And then we also report to our commission four times a year on our professional standards branch information. So you're not going to see all of that in the annual report. It's not intended to capture all of that information. And we can, we can look at those things, but just so that we're not going to have all of these things always represented in that.
Yeah, and if I could just go back to your previous question for a second. So from a context perspective, and we've done this in a couple of infographics. And, and I just want to make sure that I'm responding to what you're looking for. So while we can identify the number of police officer involved shootings that we have. We can equally identify the number of our officers that were shot at, the number of our officers that were shot. The number of officers that were confronted with an edge weapon, the number of officers that were cut or stabbed. Is that the depth of detail and context that you're looking for?
I think it's interesting because there's a number of metrics that show the arrows up and down. And they just seem select. So just looking for more information there, same as like ACERT investigation's underway. I know that's not us. But even if we could show that ACERT is dragging their feet, I think it would really help with our political advocacy to the province that they're underfunding and not supporting ACERT properly.
Without any disrespect, the annual report isn't intended for political advocacy. It's just a report on if we're achieving our goals.
Well, that's political too, isn't it? Everything's political. I guess, okay, another piece, okay, so as the edge bust, 4.2 million dollars of drugs seized. Is there any evidence that, that seizure or other major drug seizures like that are contributing to a reduction in overdose deaths? Like 4.2 million dollars of drugs? May, maybe.
I, I'm not sure how you would draw that correlation. We're not, we're not realizing a reduction in drug overdose deaths.
Yeah, maybe after that bust, that 4.2 million dollars, what happened in overdoses in the next three weeks or something? I guess I'm wondering like, is, what evidence do we have that drug interdiction has benefit? And just taking that 4.2 million off the street, you know, well, what happens to the people who are addicted and who are dope sick and are relying on the drugs? What do we, what, what's the plan for them? Do we have? Or, or what are they doing now? Are they going to even more dangerous and in unpredictable sources to get their drugs?
Yeah, I, I think that, like, you're getting into the cross section of the spectrum of community supports and services. Which is why we're advocating for linked data to get into some causation. But your question presupposes that the drugs that we took off the street weren't dangerous. And I think that's a, an erroneous assumption to make.
Well, if they, if they came off the street and we saw dip and, and deaths, then we would know, okay, they're not. Like, and we just don't have that data, I hear you saying.
We wouldn't know because again, what we took off, you're presupposing was destined for the streets of Edmonton. I don't have information and I'm not sure that anyone in our organization does as it relates to what the distribution intent of that was.
Right, um, do we track how many times the SWAT team is called out to calls?
So internally, anytime we have a tactical response requirement, we would have that information.
So how many times do we, are they dispatched?
So I don't have the information in front of me, but if, if I misunderstood your question, I thought you asked, could we do that?
Oh, you, so you can, okay, yes. And so we could tell, I suffer, I, I'm interested in probing into the response to crime and, and when are we? How we decide the helicopter, bike team, help team, et cetera, drones. The different, different, we have a suite of options. And obviously, safety is, is primacy. But other times, we may want to look at the cost per response and fiscal, I'm out of time, but fiscal, fiscal.
I think you're also venturing into more of the operational stuff of EPS, right? So I would cautious on, on that. And also, I think the political advocacy question probably better asked to the commission chair than to the service. Because this is their role, advocacy services role is on the, on the political advocacy, just. Constable Tang?
Okay, great, thank you. Just, I guess, final bit of a smattering of questions left. I was wondering if you can talk to us, help me better understand the particular, I was very interested in the outcome of. EPS is effective at using existing resources to address complex problems. And the two measures that lead to that is the dispatch calls for service and change, percent change in EPS budget. I'm wondering, I guess I'm just wondering, can you just walk me through a bit of like thought process of that particular item?
So the one, when we look at percent change in EPS budget, one of the things that we just monitor is that. That is something we need to track in order to be innovative. So as we track our budget and where we're at, you know, you, you come from being able to be innovative versus just maintaining services. So that's what, one of the things we look at when we're developing our plan and our business plan.
And, and from the call for service perspective, we're always looking at more innovative ways to meet the needs and the expectations of our community. So not everybody is looking for a police officer to respond to their home to take a, a call for service. Some of them want to engage by way of telephone, some by way of an online report, some by way of collision reporting center. So we're looking at growing those different differential police response models where they can still engage with us. But there's different conduits of engagement so that we can receive their information and give it our investigative response.
Okay, on that innovation piece, is that partly driven by the efficiency factor at all in the, in the, in the funding formula? Just curious. Because I thought that was there to drive efficiency and, and, and so I'm just curious if that, is that how the, the flow? This is how we measure and this is the outcome we get?
So I'm hearing two different topics brought up because efficiency is different than innovation for us. And so in order for us to be responsive to what we've heard in our community and to modernize our police service, and that does take innovation. And so we're monitoring our budget and as we do our planning in order to do those things.
Okay, no, fair enough, fair, fair enough, thank you. And I guess, so in the page where there's lots of different reports. I do see audit come up a few times. And I'm just want to clarify, this is the audit done internally or externally?
This is, we have our auditor internally.
Okay. And when was the last one?
When was the last one? We actually just presented an audit report to our commission this month.
Okay, great, great. And I'm just thinking about what you said earlier around, you know, for the next year, you know, some, something that we might anticipate is that goal for community feedback. Given the need to continuously be more transparent, to allow for two-way communication. And I'm just, you know, thinking about a lot of the reports to the commission. A handful of, a handful of them are public on the website. Is that part of the consideration of, you know, finding ways to? I mean, I understand there's a lot of challenges with publishing everything, given confidentiality and some of the legislation requirements. But would, is that part of the consideration of, you know, how, how much information do we, do we share more publicly?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, great, that's, that's good to know. And this is just a follow-up on one of the questions earlier around presence and visibility. Because that kind of just jogged my curiosity. What does the peer review research say about effectiveness of presence and being more visible? That, I recognize that may not be in the annual report. But I'm, I also imagine something like an annual report is informed by research and, you know, existing in the space of policing.
I think that our annual report is a, it is a report card back on the measures that we have associated to the goals that we're trying to achieve. And then we do link that to our conversations when we do planning and our business planning. And that's where you get more into research, link to the initiatives we're doing and, and such.
Fair enough, thank you. I guess on that, final question to the chair. If this is a report card, how would the commission, you know, rate this? Are we doing, is our overall, is our policing service performing well? Are we getting value for the dollars?
The services, the commission is pleased with what we've seen in this report. As always, there's room for everything to improve and we're looking forward with our new strategic plan on how we. Uh, as always, there's room for everything to improve and we're looking forward with our new strategic plan on how we can realize some of those positive changes.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Constable Tang. Uh, Constable Janz, you. We need another, I lost track of it.
I could have another two or three rounds, or you could just put me on the police commission, either or. It's up to you.
No, it's a. I pr- I probably won't comment on that. Uh, uh, do we need to go to the next round? I lost track. Okay, Constable Tang, can you move please? Uh, that we go to next.
Uh, sure.
Constable Tang, move, need a seconder?
Second.
Second, Constable Wright, please vote.
We have all the votes.
Display the votes, please. Okay, all right, Constable Janz.
Thank you. I'm interested in um, and now I realize this is, I just saw there's that reorg of. The police, so this might be a twenty twenty two question, so you can defer it if you'd like and to the commission or the service. The question about, one thing we are constantly hearing about in the city is this idea of middle management and seeing. Um, growth in middle management and uh upper management and and sort of um fewer frontline services and more, more in the middle. And um, how would I be able to see if that was the case or not the case at the service? And understanding, I just hear there's a, a review going of uh to put more folks on the front lines.
So I think that would be more in line with a budget question, but that's not included in our twenty twenty one annual report, but we do have information on that.
Right, so next year in the annual report, we'd be able to see increased um staffing to the the front, I would, I would assume based on. What what you shared previously?
Well, we've implemented our ten squad model and so that does have a set complement of officers needed to do that. Um, we wouldn't necessarily report that in our annual report, but that information is available.
Excellent, thank you. Um, like, overall, I want, I want to say I really appreciated it. It was, it was a very engaging report and and hence. All of my questions, I think, um, uh, and to build on kind of what what others have shared. It'd be very helpful as we're unpacking the priority work, which sounds fascinating. Um, if we can e- even segment it by postal code. Or even by by ward or region, I think that'd be really helpful because um I think we hear quite a bit in certain areas of the city. I I think of South Gate LRT station, there's enormous numbers of of trouble there, but even four or five blocks over in a different direction. It may be just fine. Is that a possibility?
So not a, not just a possibility, we're already doing that. So in our community safety data portal. To the nearest intersection, we are anonymizing the information.
Wow.
So it's that level of granularity, so you can see what's a a block either side of um your neighborhood as an example.
And will this be shared with the public?
It has been since March.
And this is on that new, the new crime portal you're talking about?
So just Google Edmonton Police Service Community Safety Data Portal and that's your link.
But it doesn't go back prior to ninety days.
So right now, it doesn't go back prior to ninety days.
Okay.
For two reasons. One, in January, we moved to a new CAD system that has much more granularity and dexterity.
Sorry, what does CAD, what does CAD mean?
Computer aided dispatch. Within that system. We started to collect uh data on that new more granular platform. Second part to that is our old crime map only reported out on eight crime indicators. We're now reporting out on all crime and in the future we'll be reporting out on all calls for service. Because there's a queryability functionality to the community safety data portal. We have to be able to measure what the impact of use is on our system. For that reason, we've limited it to ninety days of data for now, so that we don't crash the system. As we evaluate that, then we will, over time, have an ability to go back retrospectively to two or three years of data. That is the ultimate plan, but we have to walk before we run.
Yeah, could um, and and again, could you, new topic, could you help with the um? Now, if I get in a fender bender, I don't go to a a a station, I go to a new new service. Could you help me understand some of the implications of that and the benefits?
Well, you're, so you're talking about our new collision reporting centers.
Is that what it called? Yeah.
And we have two in the city and so you can go there instead of having to go to a a police station. And there are police officers there right now to help file your claim and do all that work.
And is it possible, well, it's maybe premature, but one, one thing I I hear from some businesses is that. The ability to file a complaint and to to report something uh can be quite onerous and uh um challenging. And if, is there a, how can we make it easier for people to report to get a more accurate reflection of crime data?
So we just opened our collision reporting centers at the end of September and so we're still. Monitoring and evaluating how it's going. We we really don't have any information on that yet to report. And in terms of the benefits and the pros and cons, we did do a, an announcement that we can share with you and it's on.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah. Um, and uh. Yeah, I'm I'm hoping that that frees up more resources to to support all these other goals. Um.
Which it has already.
Great, uh, yeah. I, yeah, again, I I want to express my gratitude and I I think this was really helpful. And I think it it personally, speaking personally, I think it helped clear up some misconceptions for me, so, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, okay, that concludes the questions. Uh, thank you so much for coming and answering those uh. Question in in fulsome, right? Uh, really, really appreciate uh all the information, so uh. Uh, we have a motion on the floor, moved by Constable Rice and seconded by Constable Tang. Um, now I'll ask council members if they wish to speak to the motion on the floor. If you do, please sign up and have Constable Tang to speak, right? Please go ahead.
Yeah, um, just want to thank you very much for this opportunity. Um, and also for, you know, my colleagues. And uh city administrations patience as we dedicate, you know, ample time this morning to kind of dig into this. Uh, you know, initially, when I put the motion on the table back in the summertime, I had hope for earlier. A timeline, but I understand it's a lot of challenge in terms of coordinating um meetings and whatnot. Um, but I think my goal really was to, prior to, uh, you know, the budget discussion in what will be, I think. Um, uh, one of the most challenging budget deliberation overall. Um, I think it's important to have this conversation first to to talk about performance, to talk about data. Um, you know, given that, you know, policing is the largest item in the city budget. I think this annual report is quite a key document to understand what we're getting for the money and. Uh, I really appreciate the opportunity for us to dive into some of the weeds with a specific, um but also hear from the commission. Uh, you know, analysis, uh and your assessment. Um, you know, when I think about, uh, as a city council, we get lots of. Performance reports on various departments of the city, uh, we do get the opportunity to really dig into those and ask a lot of questions. Um, we don't necessarily get the benefit of this kind, hearing that that kind of discussion happening at the commission level. Uh, to hear all the questions, you know, we have a very diverse and um, you know, I think competent commission. And I think it'll be worthwhile to hear some of the diverse perspectives uh and analysis. Um, while I think it's good to hear that there's a lot of collaboration and sitting together and brainstorming between EPC and EPS. I do think as, you know, governors, it's, it is important to to critique and be constructive and. Uh, and it will benefit this council and the public to hear more of those analysis and discussion. You know, in the event of, like my colleague said, clearing up any misconceptions and that kind of stuff, I think is always helpful. Um, policing evolves. I think we, we, everyone in this room recognize that. Our city evolves as the world evolves. Uh, I'm, I'm glad to hear that, you know, these annual reports are responsive to that change. And there are mechanisms in place to support that evolution and that change. Um, and in particular, you know, I'm very interested in that feedback loop with community groups, um in how they see. Uh, safety from all the different angles reflected uh in something like the annual report that tells us how are we doing? Um, and I think the other piece that I'm, I'm, I'm personally, I'm interested in. Just given that this is something I hear a lot from, from the residents in my ward, um is a bit of on the customer relation side of things. You know, people may interact with policing, sometimes it's just a call, um but but leaves them feeling actually quite bad for calling in. And to me, it makes me wonder about, you know, that service satisfaction, that customer relations. Um, and I, I hope, you know, I I certainly hope that this will be an ongoing, a thing um that you are are kind of digging into. So again, thank you very much for this opportunity. I, you know, I certainly really appreciate it. Um, I how, I've been holding a lot of questions since, I think, summertime when I, when I first read it and I read it again, and I'm like, ah, just. I can't wait for this, for this item to come forward and so I can just, you know, ask them. So thank you again for this work.
Thank you, Constable Tang. Constable Janz?
Yeah, I just want to express my gratitude again and I think one thing that's um interesting here from a governance point of view is that. Council does not direct the police, but we do appoint police commissioners. Um, police commissioners then receive this annual report and they work on a strategic plan and a business plan with the service. Um, but yet, as council, I think it's an interesting question, how, what is our vision and what is our mandate for the service? What do we want to see and what outcomes do we want to see? And then how does that manifest in terms of who, who we appointed? To the commission, what we are looking for from the commission and then how how we have this back and forth with the commission. So that's something that came through reading this report from, for, for me as well. Um, I have to again say, like, think, uh, my gratitude. Um, I I think this dialogue this morning and and I think the report and and the continued reporting does improve confidence in the part of the public. And uh assurances on the part of the funder and other community partners. I guess my wish going forward for the commission is that we can see more live streaming of meetings. The commission meetings take place in the River Valley Room, um but they're not recorded, so it's hard, I I I frequently can't attend. It's challenging to um you to to make that time and I hear that from other community members as well, but they would love to watch the the YouTube videos that they're recorded. And our community, our our committee meetings in that room are recorded. There's no reason technologically that they can't be recorded, they can't be s- stored. And compared year after year, et cetera. Um, in general, I think anytime we can enhance transparency. Um, and improve safety for all, that's, that's much, that's much appreciated, so. Um, and then finally, just gratitude to um the twenty eight hundred members of the service whose efforts contributed to. The work behind this report. I realize it's, it's uh data, but behind every data point is a story. And thank you to everybody who who uh um participated in in making our community safer. Thanks.
Thank you, Constable Janz. Uh, Constable Rice, want to close? Go ahead, please.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Sohee. I really want to say uh, um, thank you very much and for all the great work. Uh, you have been done to ensure our city's public safety and for everybody. This report is not just a report, it's chemistry, you take that accountability piece very seriously. And to ensure your service provided to meet our city and our Edmontonians' needs. And I also, I want to say, public trust still in the praise. You have public trust, from what I heard. And then so our Edmontonians need you and our business community needs you. Our, all the communities across our city and from north to south, east to west, need you. So your work is extremely important for our city and for our past of our city. Present of our city and also future of our city. And then we need your services. So as, as I asked a question, that continues improvement and for any organization and also for you as well. And I, I'm glad to see we have this accountability piece in place. And to give this transparent transparency, to give this information to everybody and really care about these services. And to see what we are doing, we are looking forward to our even brighter future. And because that public safety and we cannot miss that piece for any angle, any business. Any Edmontonians and looking forward and really on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Constable Rice. So please vote.
Amy, yes.
Thank you, Councilor Piquet. We have all the votes.
Display the votes, please. That is carried and we dealt with those emotions and motion with our customary notice yesterday, right, Maruk? Uh, now we are adjourned at eleven thirty three.